Good afternoon, everyone, or good evening. Thank you for coming out tonight to our meeting of March 24th. We've got quite a bit on the agenda, so thanks for your patience. We'll go on and get started now. And we'll start with Commissioner introductions, starting from my left to right on screen. Commissioner Sherman, can you introduce yourself?
I sure can. Good evening, everybody. I'm Bruce Sherman, Commissioner for District 02, which is over by Rock Creek Park, bordered on the south by Military, on the east by Oregon, on the west by Utah, and on the north, more or less by Tennyson.
And good evening, everyone. My name is Lisa Gore. I'm a single-member district commissioner for 3G 01, which is the neighborhoods of Hawthorne and portions of Barnaby Woods. Commissioner Nagy? You're on mute, Liz.
Yep, sorry about that. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the meeting. I'm Liz Nagy, and I'm Commissioner for SMD 07, which is bordered by Military to the north, Reno to the west, sorry, Chevy Chase Parkway to the south, and Nevada on the east side.
It could be that we have just momentarily lost Lisa. Why don't we go ahead, though, and in the meantime, continue with the Commissioner introductions. I'm looking at my screen, Carol Grunwald.
Yes, good evening. I'm Carol Grunwald. I'm Commissioner with Single Member District 03, and the boundaries of my district are Utah Avenue to the northeast, 27th Street to the east, Broad Branch to the south and to the west, McKinley on the north, and then it jogs north and east along Nebraska, where it joins Utah Avenue again. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Corinthea?
Hi, Commissioner Corinthea Simmons. My single-member district is five, and it goes from Connecticut Avenue Legation to Chevy Chase Circle, all the way back to Broad Branch, which is the divider for three and four.
And Laura?
Hi, I'm Laura Finacy, and I am Commissioner for SMD 04, which is roughly between Utah on the east, Broad Branch right on the west, between Western and McKinley. Thank you.
Great, welcome, everybody. I am, again, Bruce Sherman, Commissioner Sherman. I'm Vice Chair of the Commission, and we've just momentarily lost our Chair, Lisa Gore, who typically has her name implied, chairs the meetings. So we will give a moment for her to rejoin. And if we don't see her momentarily, we will proceed with our agenda and hope that she can join us as soon as possible.
Bruce, she asked for you to continue. She should get back on.
Okay, fantastic. So let me pull up the agenda on my end. Let's proceed with announcement of the meeting procedures and adoption of the agenda. Do we have any amendments to the agenda tonight? Anyone have an amendment to the agenda? No? Okay, very good. Let's move then also to adoption of the ANC minute meetings that Commissioner Nagy had circulated ahead of the meeting. Do we have any comments, any amendments to the minutes? No? All right, then, I move that we approve the minutes?
Excuse me, Bruce. Sorry, there's a little, a little bit of a difference from how we normally do this. We have some technical advice on how to do this. So we would move to approve the minutes with leave to make technical amendments without, with leave to make technical amendments, so that we wouldn't have to come back and have them all go through the whole process of moving and approving.
Okay, fantastic. Well, then I will move that we approve the minutes with leave for technical amendments, should any...
Thank you.
May I see a show of hands in support and voting yes to approve the minutes? All right, there's Commissioner Gore, our Chair, back with us. We were just approving the minutes, Lisa. And you're frozen. You're kind of frozen intermittently on your screen. If you want to raise your hand to approve the minutes, we'll do this and we'll count everybody, seven, zero.
Six, zero.
Oh, sorry, Peter's here. Right, six, zero, right. You're okay? Yeah, okay, fantastic. So we approve the minutes, six, zero. Chair Gore, if you want to proceed, we are at the resident forum section.
All right, thank you so much, and sorry about that. I got booted off the system. So right now, as Commissioner Goslin, or Sherman said, we are at the resident forum, which is a 15-minute forum, where we allow residents to talk about issues and introduce theirself and discuss anything that's not currently on our agenda. And I see we have Christian on the line. I wanted him to introduce himself. And if any resident wants to use his time to talk about an issue, please just use the raise your hand function, so that way we can recognize you and have you talk. But Christian, do you want to start out?
Yes, I just wanted to say good evening to you all, the Commissioners, and good evening to the residents and citizens of ANC 34G. I am Chris Smith. I am the newest Constituent Services Coordinator for Councilmember Lewis George of Ward 4, and I just wanted to introduce myself to you all, make myself available to you as a resource. Any questions, any concerns you all may have about issues that's going on in the community, just feel free to reach out to me. And I also wanted to extend my, my contact information as well. I know that the Chairman, the woman has it, but I'm happy to share it here. So my phone number is 202-538-4029. And my email address is K, as in kite, A as in apple, smith, common spelling, at dscouncil.gov. And I can repeat that if anybody needs me to, but otherwise, I just wanted to say hi to you all and say I'm very happy to be here and to be in partnership with you all.
Christian, are you coming from another agency? Where are you coming from?
Actually, I am coming out of the private sector. I used to be a manager for a small business selling vintage furnishings over in Ward 4, actually. And in addition to that, I recently was a sales associate for Herman Miller.
Awesome, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad you can make it and hope to see you more and more and more. Thank you. Matthew? Your hand raised, Matthew Moore?
Yes. Good evening. I, I, I'm not sure if I actually qualify as a, I'm not a resident, but I represent Chevy Chase Fencing Club, which has been a part of the Chevy Chase community for 40 years or so at this point. I actually started fencing there in 1985. And I've taken over at least operations of the club from Ray Finkelman, who has been the longtime runner of the club. And I was here because I wanted to raise a question about the new Chevy Chase Community Center that's going to be built, because there was some concern, because in the 2019 plan, there was a plan for a fencing room to be part of the new community center. And we were just wondering if that was going to still be, if that's still in the works, because we can have a dedicated fencing room that will make it much easier to start, you know, offering fencing to, you know, kids, for everybody from across the district. It's like I say, we've had a long tradition of being in Chevy Chase. It's like 40 years now. We've had 17 national champions, and we have a, we have a three-time Olympic, Olympic competitor, Kat Holmes, who's, who came from our club, and we'd like to keep that tradition going.
So I don't have the answer to your question. I don't know if the specs call out for a fencing room. I don't know if any of the other Commissioners know. Also, if you're going to the meeting, disposition meeting this Saturday, that would be a great question to ask in there. But Kendall, your hand is raised. Do you have an answer to that?
Hi. No, I, I don't have an answer, but I want to offer myself as a resource. I'm meeting with Demped later this week, and my team will be at the, at the Chevy Chase hearing deposition over the weekend. So Mr. Moore, if you wouldn't mind dropping your email in the chat, so I can stay in touch with you once I figure out information from the Mayor's Office, I'm happy to stay in touch.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Kendall. Okay. And no, Tom, Thomas Snaringer?
Yes, good evening, everyone. I'm a member of the Chevy Chase Art Club called Chart, and I don't think it's too early to note that in about a month, on Sunday, April 27th, will be a spring pop-up art show and sale in the PNC parking lot from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And reading from our website, I would say the show features work by local artists and artisans, painting, photography, sculpture, ceramics, jewelry, glass, quilting, woodworking, and more. So people could put that on their calendar, and I'm sure you'll see other advertisements for it, but I thought I'd use this forum to mention it.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so we are right on time for our next segment of the agenda, which is a community update on the March 29 disposition meeting with Demped. And we're going to actually discuss a couple things under this section, including the ANC Commissioner, Commission engagement. But I want to start out with letting Corinthea Simmons, Commissioner for SMD 05, to give an update about the hearing process in and of itself. And then we can move on to the community engagement portion. Mr. Simmons?
Okay, hi, Commissioner Simmons here. Just a reminder that the disposition hearing will be this Saturday, March 29th, from 9:00 to 5:00. It will be in the auditorium of the community center. In order to attend in person, you do not need to register online. You only need to register online to the link if you will be attending virtually. The agenda for Saturday is still tentative, but what we have provided out to everyone is still, it still may ideally be the agenda with changes that may not be significant to the agenda. So doors open at 8:30. The presentation and the program starts, or the hearing starts at 9:00 a.m. And then, I think it's about 2:30, we'll have the open house portion. Well, 2:30 to 5:00 will be the question, the, the public forum. And then, I believe, 1:00 will be the, the question and answer portion. And then, just a reminder to everyone, Saturday's hearing is a public forum with the purpose of everyone to receive, with the purpose of Demped receiving community comments on what we like and don't like about the presentations from the bidders. And then I can put the full agenda for Saturday. I'll put all that information in the chat. I don't have anything else to add for that.
Any questions on that, Commissioners? Commissioner Sherman?
Yeah, just a clarification that I've had to make with my constituents. The name disposition hearing is inherently a little vague for people who aren't familiar with DC government processes. So I, I've tried to clarify for folks that at the Saturday meeting, no decision is going to be made as to disposition. The Saturday meeting, as Commissioner Simmons has just articulated, is an opportunity for the community to give feedback on the proposals that would form eventually a recommendation by the, by Demped to the DC Council to enact legislation that would execute the disposition of the property. I just wanted to be clear on that, because that, that title has, is a little confusing for people. If I could ask just a follow-up to Commissioner Simmons. I put in the email today, and I don't know if you've had a chance to speak to Demped. If not, perhaps we could get an answer from Demped in terms of how they intend to solicit the feedback from the community, what that actually looks like. Do we have any idea? Last time, they used sticky notes, right? This was in October 2023, when they held two community engagements as they were reviewing the RFP. And I'm wondering this time if we know how they intend to actually solicit the feedback.
Commissioner Sherman, I replied shortly before that, but regarding the feedback collection process for Saturday, I'm not sure how Demped will facilitate this. I mentioned if we don't hear from them before the event, I'm sure that they will provide clarification during the feedback portion of the meeting on how they're going to collect the feedback. And then, my response to your funding. So as for the overall funding for the plan for the Civic Core project, I am unable to provide any details on this. We may receive details during the proposal presentations or after the, after a proposal is selected from the RFP process. I would recommend that after a selection is made from the proposal that the ANC reach out to Demped or the Council to gain an understanding of the overall funding plan. So I don't have any specific details for that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, Commissioners or members of the community, on the March 29 hearing before we go into ANC engagement process? Okay, Commissioner Nagy, you wanted to, you specifically raised this portion of the agenda. Do you want to bring up your?
Yeah, sure, thank you. I'll kick it off. I, I wanted to talk about, more about how we're going to engage the community. I'm sorry that Commissioner Goslin isn't here, because this, this pertains to Go Vocal, and specifically, Go Vocal versus Survey Monkey. And I, I want to raise the notion that we haven't used Go Vocal. It's not tried and true, and I have big concerns about taking a matter this important and using something that we've never used before to do a survey. I do think we need to do an ANC-wide survey so that we can gauge the community's opinions as, as a whole. But I am concerned about using Go Vocal, and I would move to use Survey Monkey instead.
Commissioners?
Yeah, I mean, I, I had commented to all of you today on email on these matters, and we had an exchange, Commissioner Goslin and I did, which I think all of you have seen, with respect to where we are in the process, what we need to do to carry out an ANC-wide survey. I think two weeks ago in our meeting, if I'm not mistaken, we had informal concurrence to, to do the survey. We wanted to be looking further at Go Vocal. Two weeks later now, I think that we do, concurring with Commissioner Nagy, want to exercise some care about launching a totally new platform at a time when we want to ensure a fairly smooth and flawless solicitation of views across the community. So I also think Survey Monkey, just as a platform, separate apart from what the survey would look like as a tool, which we've used in the past, know how to use, we own it, and the community has used it before, and the community's familiar with it. There's that. But then, I think it's important to go ahead and hark back to two weeks ago and just reconfirm that we, as a commission, are in agreement to do an ANC-wide survey that would be in addition to any engagement of constituents that we choose to do individually, which we've also talked about. And we've all indicated we intend to reach out robustly to our constituents in all kinds of different ways. But want to, at this point, reconfirm our intention around an all ANC survey and have conversation now about the platform, or if we need to have a meeting, conversation, a small working group meeting tomorrow or the next day when Commissioner Goslin is available, I'm, I'm available to do that as well.
Commissioner Simmons?
Hi, I just want to request that we utilize the software and tools that the Office of ANC provides us. I err on not using Survey Monkey, again, just for knowledge management purposes. If we use Microsoft Forms, which is given to us by ANC, it's saved to the 34G OneDrive. When new Commissioners come and go, it will automatically be there. We don't have to worry about someone having the password to Survey Monkey and not transitioning that over. So I think if we're going to talk about, you know, access, I think it'll be best for us to use Microsoft Tools, which is provided to us, is essentially similar to Survey Monkey. And then the only other comment, no matter what tool we use, like if we use Survey Monkey, for instance, Bruce, I'm assuming that that's the, that's what you're going to want to own and control, because you did the last survey for Survey Monkey, and you're very familiar with it. Then if we go to Go Vocal, I think you, Lisa, and Peter have been on those Go Vocal calls. But I think if we utilize Microsoft Forms, we all will have access to it. It stays on the OneDrive, and I'm just trying to make sure that we have the continuity as our ANC turns over, potentially in the next two years, this project is still be going on, and we'll have access to it. So those are my only comments. And I do agree in doing a ANC-wide survey and single member. People have their own autonomy to do whatever they want with their single-member districts as well.
So my comment would be, you know, when we purchased, we did not just start discussing the Go Vocal platform. We have started that discussion in the previous commission. We procured Go Vocal, which was over $2,000 of ANC money, which is really taxpayer money, for this very purpose. It's not a new platform. It's well-tested. ANC, I think, three, one of the other ANC's has had it up and running probably for six months to a year, no issues. And if you've ever administered anything technologically, you know, there's, there's all kinds of risk, whether you use Survey Monkey or Go Vocal. But I don't want the Commission or the community to think this is a new product that's just being rolled out. There's many jurisdictions across the U.S. and actually worldwide that use this platform, and specifically for these types of purposes. We also have access with that platform to the ANC Commissioners that are currently using it in a city, as well as Go Vocal's team as well. So it's not like we're going to be rolling this out by ourselves. I've already started formulating, and I'm going to keep formulating the site for the Civic Core project. Whether we, not we put a survey on there or not, that's what we, that's what we voted for. And that's what we said we were going to do with that. And that's how we said we were going to use this platform. Yes, the Commission did vote for that. Yes, they did, Carol. It might not have been this Commission, but that motion is still valid unless somebody goes back and a Commission invalidates it. That motion stands. That, that's why we voted for it, and that's why we procured it. I have a real concern with Survey Monkey. You know, I know folks have reached out in the past about the security of Survey Monkey as well. I don't think we've gotten clear on people being able to use it more than once. And I, I know that's a fact. Some people have taken a survey multiple times. And my biggest problem is, that's not the Commission's product. That's your product, Bruce. And if we do, and you know that the previous Commission raised this concern the last time we did a survey, is doing a survey that's not the Commission's product. If it was our account, our product, I would feel a little bit of better, better about it. And I think we have talked about using our account previously. But I don't think we should do this on anybody's personal. Even if, you know, you forward the data, it's still, you know, your product. So if anything, the split would be what Commissioner Simmons has suggested, is using the products that are offered by Office of ANC, where that would reside in terms of ownership with the Commission. The learning curve would be about the same, and we could all, you know, put it up there together. Now, I, you know, we said, and I think the Commission has said at the previous meeting, that we were in favor of a survey. And I think Commissioner Goslin commented that, you know, we still have time to develop that survey. We certainly cannot put it out ahead of the disposition meeting. We need the information and the materials that come down from that meeting to produce the survey. So we're not in a bad position. We need to start formulating the questions, start thinking about, you know, what we want to ask and how we want to ask it. But once this meeting occurs, that's when we're going to have to really start delving into the specifics of the survey and formulating the answers that we want to ask the community. So I think we're in a good position. And I go back to what I said previously about having a small working group of folks that are just guaranteed to double down on this and, you know, produce a product that the entire Commission can vote on. And I think that's, you know, what we need to do. We need to have the survey in hand, and then the Commission needs to vote on that survey prior to its push-out to the community.
Or I have a motion on the table, point of order.
It wasn't seconded, point of order. Commissioner Sherman?
Yeah, so just, just to correct the record here, because there are a lot of people on this call that are not familiar with the previous survey. The previous survey was developed laboriously over many months by a survey committee of the ANC. It was not a Bruce Sherman product. It was fielded on the ANC Survey Monkey platform using the ANC Survey Monkey account. It was not my personal account. The results are up at the ANC website and have been ever since that survey was done. Copious results from that survey made available to the public, completely transparent. So I just want to be very clear for you guys, the Commissioners, who have forgotten or never knew what this was about, and members of the community, that this is in no way, shape, or form a single Commissioner's work. It was a joint effort by the Commission using various members of the community, some of whom are on the call tonight, and they can recall, of course, the many meetings we had to develop the survey. With respect to Survey Monkey itself as a platform, again, we would use the ANC account. I simply say about that, we know how to use it. We could use another system, but I am mindful of the time. I said today in my notes that we had time to put this together and not to panic about it. I'm already on board with that. But I do think now that we do need to move forward and to develop the plan. We can't know what we're going to see in terms of the proposals until Saturday. No question about that. But we have to move that forward. I also want to acknowledge that there was scrupulous monitoring of the prior returns of the survey in real time to determine if there was any widespread corruption of the survey. There wasn't any. I can say that to all members of the community based on my own personal monitoring of the IP addresses, my monitoring of the returns by SMD based on demographic data. So while there might have been a few instances in which someone managed to take the survey more than once, there is a margin of error in every single survey. No survey is perfect, but there was no widespread corruption of the survey. It just didn't happen. So I don't want anybody on the Commission or in the community to think that there was any systemic problem with the prior survey, nor do I think there would be a systemic problem with the survey the next time if we used, if we use Survey Monkey. Finally, I'll just say, I'm totally on board with Go Vocal. It's not new. Others are using it. We just haven't used it. It's going to be new to us and new to the community. There's going to be a learning curve associated with it, and I don't think now's the time to go through that learning curve. We can do it down the road at our next engagement. We'll have many times to use Go Vocal.
Commissioner Grunwald?
Yes, hi. I just, I just wanted to agree with Bruce, Commissioner Sherman. Go Vocal may have been used by other municipalities, but it's new to us. And we are four days from all, you know, whatever's going to happen on Saturday, and we don't have a lot of time to, to learn how to use this. I think I prefer, I would strongly prefer to use something that I'm familiar with and that my constituents are familiar with. I know my constituents... I know my constituents have taken several Survey Monkey surveys, and they have specifically asked to be Survey Monke'd. So I would prefer to stick with that system, thank you.
Commissioner Simmons?
Hi, I just wanted to circle back. I apologize, I did not realize that the previous ANC had a resolution to approve and use GoVocal. So I'll amend my statement that we either use GoVocal, number one, and then if we decide not to use GoVocal. Oh, and by the way, I know we already, we've paid for it. So we made the resolution to use GoVocal. I amend that, my apologies. We've paid for it, so I think we need to utilize GoVocal. And if we don't use it, worst-case scenario, we waste ANC money, we use Forms. And then the last thing, I just want to remind everyone that the previous survey you guys did, it was probably in support of not redeveloping the library or community center. I just want to let everyone know that DMPAD is moving along with this project. They have specifically asked for the ANC to provide what we like and what we don't like through these proposals or presentations on Saturday. So I think the scope of our survey will be very limited to, hypothetically speaking, there are eight or 10, or how many ever presentations it is. We like the elements of 1, 2, 3, 4 from number 4. We like the elements of 5, 6, 7, 8 from number 8. We don't like whatever it is. So in my mind, in thinking about this survey, we have a very focused ask. Our questions should be easy to come up with. What don't you like with Proposal 1? What don't you like with Proposal 2? So I just want to make sure we're reining back in what we're going to do with this survey, and we're not getting off-topic or going out of scope. And then the last thing, I would like to have a small working group. I would like to be involved in this, since the development isn't Single Member District 5. I haven't been involved in GoVocal. So where we can get to the elements of it, I think we should go through it. Just to put at any ease, maybe we just have a targeted, non-disposition hearing survey and get it out there. But let's not waste dollars. And again, I'm an auditor. I don't want us to get audited and be questioned, why did we spend money on something we said we would? And I would probably refer them to people who want to use Survey Monkey. That's all, thank you.
Commissioner Nagy?
Well, I guess I would say in response to Commissioner Simmons' point that we will have plenty of opportunity to use GoVocal later on. It's not a waste of money, we're not wasting taxpayer dollars. Although I do appreciate her desire to be a good steward of taxpayer money. I think that the learning curve for GoVocal is the steepest of any of the any of the survey mechanisms that we're considering. And we should think about that, because the point of the survey is to get input from the community. And lastly, I would not restrict people from seeing what they think about the project. I think the channeling of the questions to the ask of DMPAD, it's not the point. It's the ANC's ask, not DMPAD's ask. If DMPAD wants to do its survey to find out what the community wants, let them do that. But our responsibility is to get what the community wants, whether that's any of the proposals, or none of the proposals, or some combination of proposals. That's our responsibility. Our responsibility is not to do what DMPAD asks us to do.
So I think we can do pretty much all of it, folks. To me, it doesn't matter what platform the survey is on. That really matters a hill of beans to me. It could be on, you know, something completely different that we haven't talked about. The most important thing that I've talked about is us getting together as a commission. And again, I brought it up before, I'll bring it up again. The best way, I think, to accomplish this is to have that small working group very focused, start immediately working. And I definitely would recommend, you know, Commissioner Goslin, Sherman, and
I'd like to be on it.
Excuse me, and Commissioner Simmons as a start to membership of that group. And if you guys want to expand it, and let me clarify, because I see the head shaking. I said, as a start, I'm just throwing out three names of three people that I know that, and this is why we can't get started, we never can agree on anything. If you want to join the working group, then feel free. But somebody has got to start, somebody has got to take the ball. And I'm suggesting those three. Definitely Commissioner Simmons, because it is in her SMD. Commissioner Sherman, because he knows a lot about the survey process, he's done that as a profession. Commissioner Goslin, who is the resident expert on GoVocal and has been dealing with this survey and this issue amongst myself on the commission for the longest. So those are three neutral parties, very good start. All of them have different opinions. If you want to be on the working group, then be on the working group. Nobody is excluding anybody here from being on it. I've said that a number of times, but amongst ourselves, someone is going to have to take the lead, and it's probably going to be one of those three people. So we're at ground zero in terms of getting this started, and we can't delay it because we can't agree who wants to be on it and who doesn't. Everybody on this commission has a right to be a part of this process, that's all. But someone is going to have to take a lead on. And that hasn't happened, and that's kind of why we're kind of stuck in this quagmire. In terms of the platforms, you know, we can still use GoVocal for other things. We don't have to have the survey process incorporated into GoVocal. GoVocal is a multi-function engagement platform. That is why the ANC procured it. It's going to allow the community to talk amongst each other. You can't do that on Survey Monkey. It's going to allow the community to show different aspects of the bids and the information that's being submitted, and to comment on that, and to give us feedback real-time. You can't do that on Survey Monkey. So we've always talked about, oh gosh, there it goes again. We've always talked about, you know, how to increase our engagement, and that's a very broad, broad platform that can do that for us. But we don't necessarily have to have, if that's causing angst amongst the commissioners, we do not necessarily have to have the survey tied into that. So this can be as broad as we want it to be, but we have to get started. So we're at time. I see Commissioner Grunwald and Nagy, you have your hands raised. I'll let you get the last word, and then we need to move on to our next agenda topic.
Yeah, am I going?
If you want, yes.
Yes, yeah. So I just think that we're complicating this. I think that this survey doesn't have to be very complicated, it's actually pretty simple. We're going to ask people to choose from a number of, or comment on, or choose from a number of presentations that DMPAD is going to show our community. And then we're also going to ask them whether they like any of them at all. I mean, how hard is that? We've already, you know, have the basics all set up already from the previous survey, the demographics and so on. So I think this is going to be relatively easy to put together.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to be that complicated either. But, you know, surveys are not complicated, and there's actually a lot of, one of the beauties of the working group is hearing from the like-minded.
And I would like to be involved, thank you.
Minds, and, you know, there's a lot of things that you Good, yeah, everybody on the commission does. That's great. You know, is you'll hear from other people, there's other considerations. So, you know, you have to talk about, what if you don't have a representative sample? You have to talk about, like we did the last time, Commissioner Ferguson did such a great job advocating for the apartment community, who's probably most affected, but was most underrepresented. So it's actually a lot to the survey discussion. It's not just formulating questions and popping them out there. There is some science to it. But with that, Commissioner Nagy, and then we need to move on to our next topic.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that the work could be led by Commissioner Sherman. Oh, I see. Yep, there is.
Commissioners, any discussion on this? Well, I'm going to say that it needs to be co-led. This is Commissioner Simmons' SMD. And if it's going to be a leader of the, if there's going to be a leader of the work group, it should include the commissioner that this project sits in, which is Commissioner Simmons. So would you be amenable to amending your motion to include Commissioner Simmons and Sherman as co-lead?
Sure.
Okay, Commissioners Simmons and Sherman, do you guys accept that?
Sure.
Okay, Commissioners, all those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? All right, that's no objection, so that is 6-0. All right, so y'all have y'all marching orders.
Um, I guess I didn't get to get this in the discussion. It's probably too late, but I want to loop Peter in this with the GoVocal. You know? Okay, okay, co-lead, I mean, I just
You guys need to get together and formulate a game plan, but absolutely Commissioner Goslin is going to play a huge role in this, period.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure this co-lead doesn't mean we're trying to, you know, exclude other commissioners. But I'm all set, Bruce, I work, so we'll talk offline, so.
Great, look forward to it.
Awesome, all right. Anything else on this? Okay, thank you, Commissioners. So we'll go on to the next topic, so we're on time. And I want to introduce Jake and Carol, if you could lower your hands so I can move people around. Thank you. Jake Hargrove, grave. How are you, Jake?
Good, good evening.
Welcome to, this is your first ANC meeting, right?
It sure is, it sure is, thanks for having me.
Thank you. Is, let me see who else is on. I'm looking for, I thought at one point I saw Councilmember Janice Lewis George and Freeman, I don't see them.
That might have been Christian.
Okay. Let's see. Okay, we'll get started. I don't see, I was also looking for Eric
Um, Christian is still on.
Goulay and the State Board of Education rep. Let's see, Christian, can you raise your hand?
I'm teamzing, I'm teamzing the council member now.
You're saying what?
I said I was, I'm chatting the council member now, so stand by.
Okay, all right, thank you. And I just saw LaJoy. LaJoy, can you come off mute?
You should see me like trying to like hit the mute button, I'm like, I'm trying, hey, guys.
How are you, my dear?
I'm doing good, my dear. I just came to, I know that there's some kindergarten issues, and I just wanted to say hey and help out.
Can you introduce yourself real quick, because most of the community probably don't know you?
Sure, so hi, everybody, I'm LaJoy Johnson Law. I'm the Ward 8 State Board of Education representative on the DC State Board. Right now, I feel as if I am floating all across the city, because as you all know, unfortunately, we don't have a council member right now. And there are so many issues that different folks are talking about that affect Ward 8 greatly. And so when there are concerns from different community members that are similar to what Ward 8 parents and parents, families, and students are going through, I just come to lend a voice and to lend a helping hand. So Commissioner Gore, thank you for everything that you're doing and allowing me the privilege and honor to introduce myself. So, hey, Ward, it's Ward 3 and Ward 4, right? You guys are combined.
Yeah.
Hey, Ward 3, hey, Ward 4 combined.
Thank you so much for being on board. If you guys don't know LaJoy's work, you need to really get to know it. She's a joyful warrior and has done a tremendous, a lot of educational advocacy throughout her life, newly elected to the State Board of Education. So glad you're here to help represent. So I will kick this off. Jake is a constituent of mine, and he approached me, and Corinthea, Commissioner Simmons, also approached me about an issue that was happening with kindergarten enrollment in the community and parents being able to have their kids enrolling kindergarten first versus first grade. And I will let Jake kind of set it up, and we will talk about this issue. There's been a lot of chatter on email traffic, and Jake can kind of go into that with Chancellor Farabee, DC Public Schools. We've had Eric Goulay, who is also a member of the State Board of Education for Ward 3, has been really heavily involved as well. And we were hoping, so I invited both councilmembers, Freeman and Councilmember Lewis George, both State Board of Education reps, the chancellor, and a couple others from DC Public School. And I believe Sharonda, Sharona is supposed to be on from DCPS. Sharona, if you're on, please.
Hi, Commissioner, good evening.
Good evening. So she's in listening mode, and she's a community relation manager. She can introduce herself a little bit later on. But we were really hoping to get the chancellor here to appear before the community to answer some really, really specific questions. This is a very disturbing set of circumstances to me as a parent, and I'm sure most parents would be disturbed by that. But I will let Jake kind of talk us through what has been happening and some of the things that him and other parents have encountered recently. And hopefully by then we'll have some other state board reps, especially Eric Goulay, on. Jake, you want to kind of give them the background on everything?
Sure, I'll do my best, and thank you, Commissioner Gore, for inviting me and the rest of the ANC for including this on the agenda tonight, and for the representatives of the council and the members of the State Board of Education, and also the DCPS representative that is here. So I'm Jake Hargreaves. I am a DC resident, live in Ward 4. I currently have a second grader at Lafayette and what I hope to be a kindergartner next year at Lafayette. The issue I have come here to discuss today is my rising kindergarten's enrollment next year at Lafayette. There's been new leadership this year at Lafayette. And a month, month and a half ago, we kind of heard through the grapevine that students that had yet to complete kindergarten but were in a certain birthdate range would be prohibited from enrolling in kindergarten at Lafayette in the upcoming year and would be forced directly into first grade. My son is born on September 30th, which is the, what DC, I guess, considers the cutoff date. If he would have been born 24 hours later, I guess I wouldn't be here. But there are, and I know on this meeting tonight, there are, I am only one parent speaking on behalf of many others that are impacted. And if this policy is put in place, I think there will be many across the entire district that are impacted, unbeknownst to them, because there has been no notice provided here. The issue is, my son was born on September 30th, which DC considers the cutoff. He is in a private pre-K program. My wife and I made the decision last year that he was not ready for kindergarten, given his age and other considerations, along with his pediatrician and his current, then educators. So we enrolled him in a private transitional kindergarten program, which he is thriving in, and have the intention of enrolling him in kindergarten next year. As I said about a month and a half ago, we were informed by another family who had a child similarly situated, born a little bit before Uh, as I said about a month and a half ago, we were informed by another family who had a child similarly situated, born a little bit before, uh, days before my child, that, that their child would not be allowed to roll in kindergarten, even though they were in a private pre-K program. Uh, so a group of parents raised this, this issue to the, uh, current principal, and we were informed that, sorry, this is a strict guideline, the age cutoff, uh, your kids are out of luck, they're going directly to first grade, if they fail there, maybe we'll reassess, but there's nothing we can do for you. Uh, we then elevated that, uh, issue to the, uh, supervise, the supervising superintendent received the same answer and we subsequently, um, have engaged the Chancellor, uh, who I've had, uh, several conversations with. First, irrespective of what is in the best interest of these kids, which I think everybody can agree, if they have not had kindergarten, uh, kindergarten is required in DC, they need to go to kindergarten. Irrespective of that, the law requires them to go to kindergarten, and this is very clear in DC regulations that say, uh, students have, pre-K through eighth grade, DC, uh, DCMR regulations say students have to meet certain proficiency requirements in four core subjects before being promoted to the next grade. Uh, these kids are in pre-K, they would have to meet, uh, those, those proficiency markers to be enrolled in kindergarten next year. Uh, they also, the other requirement is, is they have to, they cannot be absent from school for thirty days, that is specifically laid out in the law. DC, DCPS has put out a promotional, uh, a student promotion policy that quotes this directly, and the policy obviously is for the community, uh, to understand what the law is on this issue. The policy restates what the, uh, DCMR regulation states. DCPS has also put out a FAQ that is specifically for parents, it says for parents and guardians, that states DC, DCPS does not allow five-year-olds to enroll in first grade unless they have already completed kindergarten. In another FAQ, it says children who turn five by September thirtieth have a right to kindergarten. Uh, the DCPS enrollment handbook says every student within the district has a right to attend at least one of the district, uh, of Columbia public schools beginning in kindergarten through twelfth grade. It is, it is unclear why, based on that, in all of our emails, we've raised, hey, this is what the law is, this is what the policies are, this is what the FAQs say, why, why are we wrong here? And we have consistently been told, um, there is a DC, uh, code that is DC Code Section Thirty-eight, Two-O-Two, that says, your children have to go to kindergarten. In actuality, what the law says is that students the age of, that, that reach five by September thirtieth have to be enrolled in an educational institution. And if you look at this chapter of the DC Code, it is dealing with chronic absenteeism, it, it doesn't just apply to kindergarten, it applies to kids until they're eighteen. It's dealing with truancy, our kids are in programs, and they meet the requirement of this, of this provision that DCPS is using. They have selected this provision and are, and, and seemingly are refusing to engage us in their own policies that they've put out, plus the regulations that are very specific on being promoted within the DCPS system. We can't get answers, uh, on this issue. It is, it is very clear, common sense says compulsory, if, if DC requires kindergarten, kids gotta go to kindergarten, it's compulsory in DC, it's not compulsory everywhere. And it, it seems like DCPS is, is for some reason misinterpreting the legislative intent that exists here uh, to prevent our kids from a foundational component of their education, and it's very unclear to us why, so we, we have, like thankfully, we've had this opportunity to engage, um, the ANC and other representatives as to how we solve this problem. The only thing we are asking for is for our children to be admitted to kindergarten next year. We aren't asking for anything special, we are just asking they have not attended kindergarten and that they go to, go to kindergarten next year, it's, it's that simple. And when engaging DCPS about this, the proposed solution seems to be take your kids out of the program that they're in now, enroll them in kindergarten in DCPS, where they are seventy-five percent behind the current students, they will likely fail, and then they will be able to repeat kindergarten next year. And that is clearly not in these children's best interest, I think the, uh, w- w- we can, we can differ on, uh, maybe interpretations of policy, but we can all agree, that is not the solution to this problem here. Irres- irrespective of the law, the speaking for myself, and I know that there are other, other parents on this call that are in the same situation, I have a second grader at Lafayette, we made the same decision with my second grader. It was never an issue, so if, if, and, and his birthday is in midsummer, so under this same abrupt policy change, this would, uh, happen to him, however, there's many students within the DC system, DCPS system, where parents have made this decision, so to the extent that, that there is some policy shift, one, the law needs to be changed, two, parents have to be afforded the opportunity of notice, this is the way things are changed, make sure your kids are enrolled in kindergarten, whatever it is, instead of at the, there, luckily, my family and, and other similarly situated families have been made aware of this and have the privilege of bringing this to your attention, there's a whole lot of folks across the district that have no idea that this is gonna happen, and they're gonna enroll their kids in kindergarten, and presumably, they're gonna get kicked out, and the parents are gonna have no idea why. So it's inconsistent with past practice. We've also been informed that other school districts, or excuse me, other schools within the district are not enforcing this as, uh, rigorously as Lafayette, so I, I, there seems to be a principal discretion issue here. And, you know, m- most importantly, I would say, this is against the advice of these children's current educators, it's not in their best interest, it places undue stress on the school system, i- i- it, it seems that Lafayette's um, and, and present, potentially DCPS's, uh, solution as a whole is for kindergarten teacher, or first grade teachers to have to teach both kindergarten and first grade, because they're gonna have students, like my child, that have, that do not have the skills that they would have learned in, in kindergarten, directly into first grade, that can't be to anybody's benefit. I, uh, but, but I think most importantly, we, we have yet to be, be offered a sensible explanation as to why we are wrong on the interpretation of the law. And irrespective of policy, et cetera, kids have to meet certain proficiency markers in order to be promoted to the next grade. The children in these circumstances do not. Further, these kids are all in school, they're not truant, and this is not a truancy issue, so the law on this issue is clearly the regulation dealing with promotion within the DCPS system, and that law is very clear. So I'll stop, I'm happy to answer any questions, um. There may be other parents on here that would like to speak to this issue, uh, so we are, we are trying to, again, all we want is for our kids to go to kindergarten, that's the grade they're supposed to go to, that's what's in their best interest, and that's what the law requires.
Thanks Jake, um, are there any, I want to go to, um, other parents on the line, are there any other parents that want to chime in behind Jake, before we go to Commissioners? Jessica.
Hi there, I'm Jessica Hursek, I'm a pediatrician and have three boys, we moved to this neighborhood to attend DCPS, and myself attended DCPS, my mother's a retired DCPS kindergarten teacher. Um, and when we made the decision to move from this same lovely community that we've had our children in preschool in the, in the district, um, we moved our middle son to attend both pre-K kindergarten, he's now in first grade at Lafayette, our oldest son graduated from Lafayette last year and is at deal, they are thriving. Our youngest, who is five, and like Jake's son is a young five, so he's turning six at the end of next August, so right before the school year starts. Um, and like Jake described, we had a very similar experience, this was just, we only found out about the idea that when we go to enroll him, starting on Friday when enrollment starts, um, that he would be placed into the first grade and just not go to kindergarten, which is just, uh, kind of shocking to us, we did reach out directly to our principal to understand the perspectives and just were quoted parts of, of district policy that I have also read as a parent last year, when we made that decision that was in our youngest child's best developmental, social and emotional developmental interest to stay in the smaller school for another year and enter kindergarten this coming year, um, we read the, the le- the letter of the policy, the enrollment policy of DCPS, and I am not a lawyer, but to my reading, it talks about the minimum age of compulsory entry, but it doesn't talk about this situation specifically, and based on our community's experience with, um, the previous principal, there was that precedent where in those sort of edge cases, there would just be a case-by-case decision between the school and the family of what's best for the individual child, so that was, you know, how we made a decision to send our middle child, who has done wonderful and is very happy and doing great, um, within this, but that was also the assumption we were working under, without knowing anything had changed, or that any practice or application of the policy has changed, um, to, uh, have our youngest child with the plan to enroll him in kindergarten for next year, and there were no, there was no consideration of individual circumstances, um, similar to Jake's family's experience, it's sort of just caught us quite off guard as we enter enrollment season here, so that, thank you for letting us join and, and talk more about what options are.
Thank you, um, and Laura, before we go, um, to you, I want to hear from Michael.
Yes.
Another parent.
So, yeah, I really appreciate looking on, seeing.
Michael, it's a little hard to hear. Okay. And Jake, just to let you know, um, Councilmember, um, Louis George just joined the meeting, so I'll move her over once I get.
Okay, are you able to hear me now?
Get my hand, get these hands down. Yeah, much better, thank you.
Okay, thanks, um, no, I appreciate the ANC holding this, uh, this meeting and having this on the agenda, um, my wife and I had a very similar, um, sort of experience with the, uh, the Lafayette principal, where, you know, currently we have a son who would be a rising kindergartner, um, and, you know, uh, a number of sort of professionals who, who work with him, uh, sort of to, you know, help him with some, you know, personal issues, had recommended that he, you know, delay a year uh, in kindergarten, he's also very close to the cutoff, September twenty-eighth, um, and, you know, consistently, we've heard that feedback. We asked the principal if, you know, if that would be an option, we didn't really know, you know, who to go to about this or what, and we got a very similar answer, um, which was, you know, try him out, you know, in, uh, in, you know, kindergarten for next year, uh, and, you know, if it doesn't work out, then he'll be, you know, placed in some other category or whatever, um, and there was no effort to, you know, understand the individual circumstances here, and I found that really surprising, um, you know, as, uh, as others have stated on the call, like, it's not in the best interest of the child uh, to force them into an artificial situation only to, you know, regress them later, when it's clear from, you know, other professional feedback that, uh, starting him on the schedule that, you know, they're men, would be in their best interest. So, not having any understanding of what's motivating this policy change, uh, or effort by the principal to understand our individual situation, to me was really surprising. Um, and so, I'm, I really appreciate the ANC having, you know, this as an agenda item, you know, I'm interested in what, you know, can be done, you know, as, uh, at the community level to try to get some answers about the reasons for these, for the policy, and also to reconcile, you know, the interpretation of the law.
Thank you, and Jennifer?
Hi, thank you so much for, um, having us, oh, okay, there we go, um. We really appreciate the, the attention and the support, uh, of the ANC and others on this important issue, um, I've been working closely with, uh, the other parents and are aligned on this issue, my daughter, Sasha is five years old, she is a September nineteenth birthday, she'll turn six in September of this year, and she is enrolled, uh, at a private nursery school, uh, in the neighborhood that's been sending children to Lafayette, I think for decades now, she's at Temple Sinai Nursery School. And this issue, um, is entirely new, completely blindsided our school, um, to, to be frank, which should be shocking, considering the number of children from that school that go to Lafayette as, as a feeder school in Lafayette. Um, and Sasha's been continuously enrolled in school, she started in nursery school as soon as she possibly could when she was two years old, she couldn't, based on the nursery school's license, she couldn't have started any sooner than she did, because the license that DC issued is a September first cutoff, um, and also parallel to that, we lived in Maryland, um, when we enrolled Sasha in nursery school, we're fairly new to this neighborhood, and with a September one cutoff in Maryland, there's just misalignment all over the place, and so there's a lot of work that needs to be done to align guidelines, policies, there are families that move across the border frequently, there are children in nursery schools with different licenses, um, and so there needs to be some space for transition, for flexibility, to allow for these children to go to kindergarten, um, because we're caught in between where we started Sasha in school as soon as we possibly could, like I said, and now she's trying to be forced, the DCPS is trying to force her into first grade at no fault of our families, her current schools, or, or no one else, and it, it's simply to her detriment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Finacy?
Hi, thank you, um, I, uh, come to this issue kind of wearing three hats, one is a mom of twins who were born in October, when we started, uh, kindergarten, the cutoff was actually Halloween. Um, another is I work at an elementary school, I've been a teacher for twenty-five years, and I also tutor privately a student who has an end of September birthday, so, um, I, you know, I, as I watched the flowers bloom this week, you know, if you're a daffodil and you're in the sun, you're pretty much blooming right now, right, it's pretty consistent across the city, kids are not like the daffodils or the cherry blossoms, they don't all bloom on the same schedule. They will bloom, but they're at different times, and I think it is unfortunate that there seems to be a real lack of flexibility, when my kids were coming along, um, the principal at the time, not the previous one, but two principals ago, basically anywhere between September one and the Halloween cutoff, you could go with that class, or you could delay a year, and I had been the youngest in my class, my husband had been the youngest in his class, we both found it very hard socially, I was also very small, uh, so we had our kids delay, and it was absolutely the right choice for our kids. Um, they weren't ready, they needed more playtime, um, this, the child whom I tutor, um, you know, his scores may look like he's in the twenty-fifth percentile for his grade, but if he were in Montgomery County, you know, six blocks away, he would be in a grade behind, and he'd be at the top of the class, right, his best friend is four days older, four days younger, and in a different grade. Um, so what I think really, Montgomery County is, like, no place is perfect, but their policies for kindergarten are much uh, more in tune with where kids go, right, they have a September one deadline, which I think is more appropriate, but the parents have two options, if the parents think that the child is, um, would benefit from a delay, there's a form, it's Form Five-Sixty-Nineteen. You fill it out, you say my child needs a delay for immaturity, usually that's granted, and your child can start kindergarten a day later, I mean, a year later. The other option, though, that they have, if they turn, um, five by October fifth, fifteenth, um, they can get what's called EIC, which is an Five by October fifth fifteenth, um, they can get what's called EIC, which is an early entry to kindergarten. And there's a, that form is not short. It's very long. And the parents would list the different things that students are able to do, you know, can they tie their shoes? How do they get dressed? Can they use scissors? Can they? Do they know their letters, their numbers, you know, different kinds of things? And if the child is ready to go, but is. After that September one deadline, they can be granted early entrance. So it gives flexibility on both ends. That I think is really appropriate and um. As well as the September first deadline. And I think DC would be wise to follow that. I mean. It does take a little more time on the school's part to process the documents for the parents, but um, you know. We're not really red shirting kids like to be on some kind of sports team here, right? This is really about the kids' um emotional and academic development and. Having, you know, a kid who's struggling, not because he's. Not smart, but because he's got the body and brains of a kid a year younger. He's still in. Um, play mode and they're trying to do academic work, you know, it's just a misalignment. And I think DCPS would do very well to. Take on the flexibility that Montgomery County has been using. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, is Councilmember Louis George? Search on still with us?
Yep, I'm here. I'm still with you.
How are you? Thanks for joining me.
Good to see you, Commissioner.
Too. Hang on, let me see if I can move you. Can you raise your hand, council member? That way you'll pop over to the.
Yeah.
Of the screen. There you go. Great. Um, so I know you um have spoken with Jake and have heard some of the issues. I think one of the questions that. One of the community members asked is really appropriate, what can be done? Did we lose her?
No, no, I'm still here. You can't.
Oh, yeah. Oh, leave your hand.
Got it, got it, got it.
There you go. What can you suggest? And I know. Like, just, you know, for everybody, there's a lot can do letters. There's a couple of different things that we could do. Um, I definitely plan on doing a resolution on this. Um. I know State Board of Education rep Goulet had talked about um a resolution from the State Board as well as proposed legislation that he was thinking about. What do you suggest and what are your, some of your thoughts? Where do you think the community can go with this? And just kind, can you give us like, um, where you think, um? What what's going on here? I mean, I'm very surprised that this is occurring, first of all.
Yeah.
I feel terrible for the parents.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so I, you know, I reached.
Yeah, as a mom.
Yeah, I I reached out to the chancellor today. He was on the way to a meeting, so we had a brief conversation. Um, this was after I got a chance to talk to Jake. And I was just trying to get a sense of like, what is going on here? Um, he, what he indicated was that he wanted that. That DCPS did not want to feel they were intentionally retaining kids in kindergarten. And they did not want um a wave of. Um, a a large wave of students who would have an age advantage because it would be bad for, I guess, the system. Overall, if. Uh, if there was age advantage uh in mass numbers. Um, he indicated that. Uh, and I saw and I asked, well, what what can be done now? And he indicated that he wanted the parents to, I guess, enroll. Enroll now and let DCPS make a determination. But he, they didn't want to just make the determination based on um. Any outside assessment. They wanted to make, DCPS wants to make the determination on their own. Um, and so. His suggestion was, well, let them, they can enroll now and we'll make a determination, or they can enroll at the end of the year. And we will make a determination and that determination would decide versus sort of um. Any sort of outside thought that they thought would. Be the case. Um, he indicated that um the programs that the youth were coming from has to be an Aussie-approved program. And that he did reach out to Aussie, but Aussie stated they would not be able to approve the program as an Aussie program. Um, as quickly as wouldn't be needed here and that to be an Aussie-approved program that that would take evaluation. Um, that evaluation could take over a year and it wouldn't be a fast process. Um, be, and because that's what we asked him. Um. I asked him, like, will you, would DCPS be sort of willing to sort of. Convene sort of a working group of some sort to update and make changes to their current policies as it relates to this. Um, and he said, you know, that's something we can consider. Um, but it's not something that would happen in the immediate. Uh, need now to impact the families that um are impacted. Um, and, you know. So, so that, that's what I've heard from the chancellor. Um, and then from a policy perspective, if if the. Uh, agency, sort of DCPS as the agency, is unwilling to sort of internally change the policy. Obviously, there are legislative powers where. The council uh education committee could. Convene a working group to create and update the policies of, you know, in this area. And I was saying to Jake earlier that I think. That would be a good place to start to get the chairman, to get Chairman Mendelson and the education committee. To either host a working group to prepare legislation, like, like. Instead of doing legislation and then having a hearing, like, actually bring a working group together. And have um parents and have this weigh-in where we can uh weigh, you know, different policies in Montgomery County, et cetera, and then have. The ch- the education committee then propose a legislation. To the agency or or and then go through the legislative process here. But again, the issue with that is the legislative process. Again, time is not in our parents' favors right now, which is, you know, in our families' favors right now, which is the issue. Because even with that, that would still take the entirety of a legislative process to do. Um, and that would have to wait until after. A delayed budget uh and all of the things that are happening on the congressional level at at this time. Um, so that's what I, that's, that's sort of what I've been sort of, so I was listening tonight. Um, and Sebastian's been on the entire time listening from my policy team and and um Christian. From the CS team, just so that I can get a sense of what I can be proposing. From a policy perspective to the education committee of the council, Chairman Mendelson. Um. The only other fast track to this is for the agency to themselves to agree to update the policies. Um, I did ask why the sudden change here and uh I did not get a clear answer. It was sort of. Well, it it isn't a change. I was like, well, it has to be a change because if it's happened before and it's now, like, this is a clear change. So there was no clear answer. Um, from the chancellor as to sort of where this change in policy or practice has come from.
Okay, wow. Jake?
What, so what what is uh very concerning and confusing to me is is the, the, the resolution here, DCPS's resolution is. To like punitively penalize the families here. Nobody within DCPS has said, you guys are wrong in how you're reading the law or the guidance. And that's what we want as parents. Like respectfully, the law is clear here. They can do what they're trying to do. So. They're the ones that need to change the law. If they want to remove parent discretion here. And the, the, the enrolling kids now, like, and and it, what it seems to me, in their interpretation. Given the law, you could enroll children today. Never show up for school one time. They wouldn't meet the proficiency requirements and they wouldn't, they would be absent more than thirty days, and so they would automatically go to kindergarten next year. Now, that's not the solution. Like, clearly that doesn't make sense. But if, if, if we are operating within this framework. That's the only option that's been, that's, parents are allowed to choose here to make sure that their kids are entitled to the education that they are legally entitled to.
Nicole? Nicole Page?
Um, I think there is a way I was gonna say, you know, Aussie does have. It's pros, I mean, um. I think there's an avenue to reach out to Aussie to get the district agent, because Aussie is the um, you know, oversight of. All of our LEAs, our local education agencies. And so Aussie does have oversight over DCPS in that regard. I think it would be good to get. Aussie to give us, uh, Aussie to give guidance here. Um, and give clear direction based on the rule of law that you all, that I, that I agree is is stated there. Um, so Aussie can basically make the determination whether the a- agency, which is the LEA DCPS, is interpreting the rule. Incorrectly and therefore not providing the children uh and their families subsequently as, you know, um, their rights under the law.
Councilmember, would that be something your office would be willing to ask Aussie officially?
Yeah, I'm happy to ask Aussie, um, reach out to Aussie. Um. And find out.
Okay, thank you. Um, Nicole, did you, you have your hand raised? And then Carmia Lewis hands her hand raised as well.
Perfect. Thank you all so much um for allowing us to be here and advocating for these kiddos. I am a preschool director in the neighborhood who is also trying to advocate with the families to ensure that the children. Um, have their developmental needs addressed um and support them through this. Um, there's a lot of scientific research that backs. Um, the retention um in the pre-K, within the pre-K years, but I just wanted to note two comments because I feel like the parents have um. Truly hit all the staples of uh the issues that we're addressing. But two concern, well, two just statements.
Good for her, she is.
Oh, sorry.
She's on.
Our, our program is licensed through Aussie. We are licensed. We have a child development center number addressed to us. We are approved. Um, we, you know, do best practice with our children. Uh, we encourage parents to individualize their child's education plans. And we make certain that we're making the best foot, putting the best foot forward for our kiddos. Um, so one, that we are licensed and approved, uh, these programs, we are regulated through Aussie. Um, all of our information is updated into the Delt uh DC system, which provides the children's ages, provides their uh medical immunization records and so forth. Um, my other statement, just to add to this conversation, is that uh. I've only experienced this with Lafayette. I have encountered other DCPS schools. I have. Direct emailings with other principals uh in nearby neighborhoods that explicitly state. That they defer to the sending school's recommendation. Um, we, we also contract out with specialists because we are early childhood educators. We are not specialists. We contract out with private consultants when we have children with developmental concerns. That also support our findings and basings. And then we just have children that need additional support. Um, for social, emotional reasons, uh, or just overall holistic developmental concerns. So I just wanted to make those two statements tonight is that, you know, we're following best practice. We're following scientific research. Um, the uh policy is not clear cut and dry. Um, I have uh pleaded with Principal Prawl. To make this exception for this school year, and then we will put our best foot forward for the next group. I've already notified parents. Um, who would be put in that position next school year as well, who have not retained. So I just pleaded with her to make this exception for our small group now. And then next year, we will make sure to defer our, all of our families to follow the proper protocol. So I just wanted to make note on that tonight, and I appreciate you all. For being here and advocating for our kids as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Allison?
Hi, uh, my name is Allison Fitzsimmons. I am um a parent at Merch. I'm also a Temple Sinai parent. I'm the co-president of the Merch HSA. Um, I'm speaking on my, my own behalf tonight, but I just want to to point out and just make it clear that I know Merch for a fact does not. Does not have this policy in place. Another Temple Sinai student that is in the same situation. Um, is going to kindergarten next year. And um, and I think the question is really. Why, why was, why is this continuing to to go through? It's clear, there is discretion, right? Like, it's clear, it's obvious, no one's disputing it, there's discretion, and it's just not. Clear why the principal and the chancellor have decided to just continue keeping on, keeping on. Um, I really wish the chancellor would have made an effort to come tonight. We deal with so many issues as parents in our education and. Um, being part of the public school system in DC is wonderful for a lot of reasons. But um the issues that come up like this or other nuanced issues where it feels like. You just can't be heard and there's just not a logical conversation that can happen. Is where parents, I think, fall apart and lose faith in the DCPS system. Um, Merch has dealt with our own issues before and um the amount of stress it puts on families to go through this and. Honestly, it's, it's incredible that and and it's privileged that we all have the time to sit here and come to these meetings and. And argue this, but you know, there are parents that don't have that, that ability to do that. Um, and I really think this, that the chancellor's office is, and the principal at Lafayette is doing the entire community a disservice to keep on pushing. Um, this narrative, which honestly, I think might just come down to, she doesn't want to backpedal at this point and doesn't want to just say, okay, let's just change it for this year. Um, so I'm in support. I I I hope that everybody has a chance to make their decisions for their own children and I, and I really hope that um. The city can come around and make the, and do the right thing.
Thank you. Um, Laura, you still had your hand up. And then just in conclusion, Councilmember Louis George, did you want to add some final thoughts? Laura, did you have um anything else to say at?
Yeah, um, just one thing that I was thinking about, right? Like, if you go in and you're very young and kindergarten. And you're not successful with your academic tasks, right? Then. You're going to be, hopefully, if the teachers in the school are on board, then you're going to be given very expensive interventions. I provide some of them at the school, like I've got, you know, reading interventions for certain kids. And then you, they might be in the IEP process or the five oh four process. And this policy of putting kids in early when they're not ready, it could cost the schools a lot. Whereas just giving the kids a year to grow up could actually be very cost effective. And I wonder if they have thought about that. Um, and it's, you know, it's, it's time consuming. It's a lot of paperwork. IEPs are like forty pages now. I mean, it's crazy. But sometimes the kids just need a little time to grow up. So that's, that's a thought that I don't think has been really um digested.
Yeah, very good point. Commissioner Sherman?
Um, I appreciate the the comments from the parents of Jake, Jessica, Jennifer, and others who spoke tonight. I I uh. Have sympathy for your situation. Thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate it. Uh, I have um. Uh, six hundred and three children and eighteen in my single owner district. Lots of kids are at Lafayette, lots of kids are are in kindergarten. So I. I appreciate the conversation. Just a, a question, um, obviously, a. Missing component in the conversation tonight, not that she has not been in many conversations that parents have had, obviously she has been, is Principal Prawl. Uh, did we encourage her to be with us tonight to get her perspective on this?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, great. Appreciate it.
Yep. Okay, um, so. We'll just wrap it up there. I mean, this was a, I just, uh, I feel so sorry for the parents that are going through this. Um. I wish there was a, a answer that we could give you all tonight to reverse this situation, but. Looks like we're gonna have to keep pressing forward. There are definitely some things that we can do as an ANC um in support of what Councilmember Louis George said that, you know, she would do and what she's doing. For the families right now, um, approaching Aussie. Um, I think it's very appropriate for this commission to send a letter to the chancellor and to um. Principal Prawl. We had to send one. Into Principal Procard. to Principal Procard, but I do think, um, we need to really kind of express the frustration of our parents and you know, like, some of the chat comments said, and some of the things that I've just heard anecdotally, this is an issue that's occurring at Lafayette Elementary School. Um, I haven't heard anybody yet that is appointed to, that's pointed to another school where this is occurring. So I think that's where our problem lies, unfortunately. But, um, and then I think we should definitely send a letter to the chancellor, um, expressing the same frustration and our disappointment that he did not come here tonight to stand up for his decision and the decision for, you know, that the principal made. Um, and then with that, I'm definitely gonna work on a resolution and hopefully Commissioner Finacy, you'll agree to co-sponsor it with me as the other, um, the commissioner that Lafayette sits in your district and you have absolutely the best education experience on the commission. So it would be great to work with you on that. And then, um, I spoke with Jake earlier. We've been talking a lot. And one of the things that I'm gonna piggyback on, something Councilmember Louis George said is that to urge that meeting with Middleton's office, I think that's a really good place for us to kind of go. Um, his office has done working groups before, so I think that's a great suggestion. Um, I'm part of one of the working groups his office started, which is ANC, um, Vacant Property Caucus, which has done a hell of a lot of good work. Um, so he's done things like that before with commissions and commissioners. So I'm hopeful that he'll want to take this up. And, um, you know, just to let the parents know that I'm gonna keep fighting this on behalf of my constituent Jake. And, uh, we're gonna keep working to see what we can do in terms of a resolution. But we'll definitely let the city and a principal know how we feel as a commission and your thoughts. And, um, I'm just sorry, this is, you know, going forward. I mean, any parent that's gone through, I, I just cannot imagine being in your situation. I mean, it's just terrible.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. And I, again, I, on behalf of all the parents, this is the first public forum we've allowed to, uh, to voice our, our perspective. And this is cathartic if, if nothing else. I think that, um, all, all we're asking is why should we not be following your law and your guidance? Read us your guidance and tell us why we are wrong. With, this is not about an exception. This is not about like, sorry, we misunderstood. This is about, if you're a parent and you read what DCPS has put out and you read the law, this is what you would do. And, and that's, that's, I think that, uh, on behalf of like my family and others similarly impacted, we can't get an answer to that.
Right. Right. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. And, uh, thank you for Sharona. Uh, I know you heard everything. Please take it back. Um, and LaJoy, thank you for coming out and meeting the Ward Four, Ward Three community. Um, appreciate all the work that you've done in education and, um, please keep an eye out across the city for, you know, similar issues like this. And just know that you have a, a advocate here in three, four G to help if you do see that.
Well, thank you, three, four G. I just appreciate you all, like, for having me. Jake, as I said, and, and the chat, I'm so sorry. Um, you and your family are going through this. Um, I'm also gonna be doing a little, a little bit of digging behind the scenes um, to, to, to see, to see what's going on. Um, I do have to hop off for another meeting for advocacy efforts on the Hill and regarding Congress. Because as we're all talking about this, I do not want us, I do not want us to cut any money to any school in this city in the current budget that we are in. So that's the other thing that we all don't want. We don't because if that happens, I'm just afraid that all of the other things that we're concerned about currently, they're gonna be pushed to the back burner and we don't want that. Because parents such as yourself, we're already trying to figure out enough stuff for our children. I'm a mom. My child, um, is thirteen, but I remember going through early stages with her. She does have an IP, so just going through all these different things. So if you all need me to come back and talk about special education, um, I would be more than happy to come back with you all as well. So I want to extend that invitation as well.
Thank you. Thanks, LaJoy.
Bye, guys. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you again, Jake. I appreciate it. Thanks, parents.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on. Thank you. We'll move on to our next section, um, which is a resolution that myself and Commissioner Goslin, along with ANC three F had, um, issue. Um, this, me and Commissioner Goslin have been working public safety issues along Connecticut Avenue, pretty much since we first entered um, the commission, which was in twenty twenty, so about five years. And one of the major things that we had been working towards is trying to get some answers, information, data. And an understanding in terms of public or, um, permanent supportive housing vouchers that require, not require, but that offer social service support to residents. Um, there have been a lot of public safety incidents along the Connecticut Avenue apartment community. Um, we have obviously a lot of people that live there harmoniously, um, where nothing occurs. But we have had some very, very serious issues. The other thing that was brought to our attention in working with this is that even some residents that are on that type of voucher have reported never seeing their caseworker or their case manager. So even though they would want to accept those social services, they did not know who to go to. Um, Councilmember Fruman has had meetings, ANC three F and three C have had meetings. We have had meetings where we've all heard not only constituents that live in the apartment community, but also constituents that live in a compartment, apartment community that are part of that, um, supportive housing voucher program, say that those services are not being provided. So within the last couple of months, I'd say maybe twenty-four to eighteen months, we have had, and I don't think a lot of people know this, but we have had, um, four very, very young children. Um, I think the youngest was five months to die in an assistant unit. So that is a unit that is being subsidized one way or the other. Um, and we do know, um, that those units were subsidized units. Um, so the instances or circumstances around that are very troubling, um, very sad. Um, you can, you know, Google some of the names and they'll come up. This is really impacted our Murch community. Um, one of the young kids that was, um, killed recently attended Murch. Um, some of you guys might remember Commissioner Ferguson um, bringing this issue up and how it impacted the whole community. So we've still been working this issue. And we're introducing, um, a resolution. The resolution was actually just passed by three F um, last week. Um, so I'm introducing it here. I'll go over it briefly for those in the community that haven't had an opportunity to hear it. And it just basically kind of highlights the Housing First model, which is a model that we all believe in. Um, I think it's a very strong model, but we do not think that model is being successfully implemented in the district. Um, but it's basically a model that really tries to tackle the homelessness issue and basically, um, says that we will house first. You know, there used to be models where we would require different things to occur before people got housing. This model says that we will house you first. Um, but within that model, oh, you have the permanent supportive housing vouchers, which offers the intensive case management. And those case management, um, services are for people that have chronic disabling conditions. So, you know, mental illness or, so we talk about that. Um, and we also say that the district is failing to adhere to that model. And, you know, primary requirements are thirty percent of gross income goes to pay their rent. And, um, that the agencies that are involved in providing case management conduct weekly team or case manager, case management visits to voucher recipients' homes. Um, we talk about the four children, uh, kindergarten age child, child at Murch, as well as three infants that died between February twenty-three and January twenty-five in voucher assist, voucher subsidized apartments on Connecticut and Massachusetts Avenue, including Akinmore, which is located within our ANC boundaries and specifically Commissioner Goslin, single number district. We state that in at least one case, local media reported the parent of one child was previously seen. And another case, um, an official witness stated that one parent was experiencing homelessness at the time of the child's birth. We talk about the intensive case management. A certain model requires this. Um, we feel in the resolution that this might have prevented deaths if these families are, if the leaseholders were being served in these models. Um, we talk about how we have previously engaged with District of Columbia officials, including MPD, um, the deputy mayor of public safety, um, and, um, we talk about the previous deputy mayor of public safety actually attending a July eleven twenty-two regular public meeting of ANC three G to discuss these concerns. We also reiterate that the chairs of ANC three G, three F, and three C on October twenty-first of two thousand twenty-four issued a joint letter requesting that the DC Council Committees on Housing Health and Facilities and Families hold a joint roundtable to discuss tenant safety issues in apartment buildings along Connecticut Avenue. At the time, we cited two child fa, um, fatalities. And within the time of that letter was written to now, we have had, um, two additional fatalities. Um, we talk about our constituents in and around three, four G repeatedly requesting, um, and reporting the need for greater public safety in and around the apartments, witnessing abuse of children and the need of more case management services that aren't being provided. Um, and we also say that ANC three, four G is committed to reducing homelessness and improving the outcomes for individuals in need of support. That we're committed to safety, security, and healthy outcomes of children residing in our community that are most at risk. And that as an ANC, we believe these factors are interconnected and reflect broader implications of housing support services. So we have three recommendations in the resolution. The first is to urge the mayor and the Department of Human Services and council members White and Fruman to fully fund and require at least in-home case management um, visits to all PSA voucher tenants and prioritizing those with minor children in the house. Um, we request the DC auditor to conduct an audit of records of PSH case management providers to verify the frequency and quality of those in-home visits, including documentation of services provided and outcomes, particularly those with minor children. And that the council, as we call for in our October twenty-four, twenty-first letter, holds the joint oversight hearing as requested by the chairs of ANC's three, four G, um, F and C. So commissioners, that's the resolution. Resolution, um, at this point, I would move that the commission adopt the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Sherman. Um, is there any discussion on a resolution? I know I can't use the, um, community members, Karen, I see your hand. Can you use a raise your hand function so that'll put you in a queue? Um, but let me go to commissioners first.
I'm trying to, but it's not coming up. Here it is.
Got it. Thank you. Um, commissioners, do you have any, before I go to community, do you have any questions on the, um, resolution? Any technical aspects of it or any discussion on? On it? Okay, all right. Karen, I know you have been, uh, oh. Commissioner Ferguson, um, Finacy, I'll come right back to you. Um, Karen, I know you've been at a lot of the same meetings, so I'm very interested to hear your perspective.
Well, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I, I live in a building in which one of those children was found dead. So, um, I do feel it very personally in that sense. But I, I am not sure if you know this, Lisa, but the federal housing choice model does not require any voucher recipient who receives a federal voucher. Now, it may be different if it's a DC voucher, because there are those two ways that vouchers are funded. But the federal model does not require voucher recipients to accept any services whatsoever. So the res, I feel like the resolution is off balance. No, I, there's a notice they want to cut me off. Okay. So, I mean, it's, it's not that you can tell the council to, to follow the housing model. The housing model doesn't require that. Um, I, I guess you could ask them to make an exception to the housing model and to institute some kind of, um, requirement. I, I think it would also help a lot, quite frankly, if, um, sorry to say this, if voucher residents were screened before they were given vouchers. They used to be, they used to go through a screening process that had to do with addictions of various kinds, how recently they may or may not have served jail sentences and mental issues and so forth. During the pandemic, temporary legislation was passed by the council that deactivated that requirement. People applying for vouchers could self-certify. And in the past year, that temporary legislation was made permanent. And, um, I, I we have many voucher recipients in the building in which I live. I think it's probably close to two-thirds of the residents here. And that's another issue, is sort of over-concentration um, in particular buildings. But what I want to say is, it's, it's just, it's some, just some voucher recipients who are not ready to live independently. And the thought is that reinstating the screening process might help with that. Though, I don't know where the money would come from, because everything is so incredibly tight right now.
Okay. Thank you, Karen. Let me go to Allison.
I, um, just also, um, we, as part of the Murch HSA, like I said, and we did lose our community member and it, it has tragically affected so many of the students in our school um, and the community. And one of the things that we've heard so often is that there's no, um, compulsory demand for the, for voucher recipients to accept services. Um, and, you know, it, I, I think bringing children into the mix makes it so much more delicate. Because while you don't want to impede on people's rights and you want the Housing First model to get people into housing, um, I think ultimately, we need the kids to be the first in our minds of making sure these kids are safe. Um, you know, I only read news art, we only have as much information as I read in the news articles about the situation, but the living conditions seemed appalling. And it seemed that if any single person had gone in and, and seen that, that little boy could, could have just had a different situation. Um, and so I, I don't know where the line is. I don't know what the solution is. I think it's obviously, no one has figured it out yet. But I thank you guys for continuing to, um, think about it and talk about it and make the resolution. I was at the three F, um, safety meeting and there's a lot of finger pointing between, um, HHS and, um, also um, MPD about who there's a lot of finger pointing between, um, HHS and, um, also, um, MPD about who's responsible for the calls, when can you make a call, you know, um, and I think so, at, at some point, we all just got to take accountability, everybody, and say, we got to fix it. It, you know, somebody's got to have accountability. Somebody might have to have their apartment looked at to make sure these kids are safe. Um, but that's just my opinion. But thank you, guys. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I agree. I mean, I think, you know, these last two conversations that have focused really on kids, first of all, really, um, touches my heart. I'm so glad that we're focusing on our future in this ANC. Um, there's a lot of issues that come before us, but, you know, these kids that are coming up in our community now, they're, they're going to replace us one day. And regardless of whether we're talking about their education or their safety while they're in their homes, I mean, it is of the critical most importance. And, um, you're right, Allison, I spent, it took me a long time to get this resolution to the ANC, because I read every document. I went into the district, uh, court system, I read every affidavit, every complaint that was attached to these cases. And it is appalling. It is horrible. Um, I, you know, it's just I don't, you know, it's, it's, it's terrible. It's horrible. And I, I think you're right. And I think in every last case, and that's why we chose to focus on those kids and their circumstances in this particular resolution. And, and, um, Karen, to, to address kind of your issues, this is a series of resolutions. We're also trying to independently outside of the ANC's, our commissions, we're trying to work on meetings with the mayor, because we are, you know, we are very, um, driven to let the city know that this is not working. Um, and this is not just a bunch of community members complaining, this is not working. And within the span of 24 months, we had four kids. We say killed, some of them were, you know, I don't want to say, yeah, I mean, I mean, these, uh, if you look at MPD's records, uh, they classify them, some of them as as a homicide. Okay, so this is extremely serious.
I, as homicide.
Yes. So, I mean, this is extremely serious, and we've heard over and over and over um, from residents that are part of this program, that they don't even know who their case manager is.
Absolutely.
DHS would like to keep us believing that they're offering services and people aren't accepting them. Right. And that, that, that's partially, partially true. Um, but there are just many residents that are saying they don't know who they are.
Yeah, because they don't come.
And that they want those services. So that, right. And that's why I offer, so you know.
Also, that each case manager has like 200 people or something, you know?
And that's, I addressed that with DHS at that meeting. And I, I said, because my background is, you know, from the IG community where we do with oversight. I was on the investigative side, but worked very closely with audit and inspection. And I've worked enough investigations of government program to know that capacity is always an issue. It is always an issue. And I was floored when they said that they had no capacity issues in that program. That is outrageous. And that's why I called specifically in this resolution for the DC auditor to get involved. The last audit of this program, and it's, you know, we call them program audits, last audit of this program was going back to, what, 2015 or so? Even way before then. It's time for a new one, and it's time for them to specifically focus on the delivery of services to this group of individuals. They are the most at risk, and if there's kids in those units, they become the most at risk. Um, so with that, I will go to Elizabeth McPike before I call for the vote. Elizabeth?
There, am I on?
Yes.
Thanks, Lisa. I belatedly sent some, um, comments earlier today. I hope they reached um, all the commissioners. I want to associate myself with all the comments that Karen Caston, uh, just, uh, made. And I just put in the chat that anyone who's interested in this topic, I urge them to listen to the October 28th ANC three F meeting on this subject. It's a couple hours long, but you will learn a lot. Councilman Frumman was there. He was really, really excellent. And I want to take a minute, if I can, uh, uh, to pass on the co- comments, the brief, some of the brief comments that he made. The reason, well, I was happy to hear Lisa, that this is going to be a series of resolutions, because certainly the resolution as it stands, this one, I think sends an inaccurate message to the community. It sends the message that if only there were more caseworkers or social workers, or you know, whatever, then this problem would be solved. And as Matt, as Councilman Frumman pointed out at that, uh, meeting, uh, well, two things. One, he said that everything he has worked on since he got elected, this is by far the most difficult and so far in his mind, the most unsolvable problem. And so my ob- uh, objection to the resolution is that, of course, we want more caseworkers. We want more social workers. Who could be against that? But, uh, as long as, and I'm going to briefly read the four things that he, and he was very brief, like a sentence each, the four problems he identified as to why, um, let me just find it here, as to why that is, um, as to why, uh, that is insufficient. Okay, so he was very frustrated after hearing from, or really sort of not hearing from, I think Karen would agree, the, uh, solutions from the DHS people. I've never seen him quite so frustrated. And so it, this is what he said. In a few words, here are the four problems. Number one, there is no filter going in. And that's what Karen was just talking about. That's a quote from him.
About certification.
Was just talking about in terms of the screening. Second, the services are voluntary. I mean, voluntary in the sense of, um, voucher holders accept, uh, uh, accepting services. They can have a caseworker or whatever come and knock on their apartment door and not even open their apartment door. Okay, so services are voluntary. And by the way, at, at that meeting, the two people from DHS, uh, one of whom was the, uh, staff director, I believe, uh, both of them said the same thing. Um, our clients have the right to say no to services. I would say in, in that meeting, that was repeated at least a half dozen times by everyone there, the DHS people, the council. So that was the, the second problem he identified, that services are voluntary. Thirdly, this is a quote from the councilman. If there are serious issues that arise, including threats against other tenants, DHS says it's not their problem.
Right.
Unquote, from the councilman. And by that, what, what he meant by that was, and that's why he was so frustrated with the DHS.
A lot better. Thank you.
As Karen and many others from that, um, from that area described many problems in their buildings. And, you know, kept trying to get the DSH people to say something substantive. All they said is, well, um, talk to the landlord. Well, remember, that's the same landlord who's not allowed to screen the people.
Right, and not allowed to reject them.
And that's what I meant by not.
I don't know what the background talk is. Is there a way to mute that?
I, I can't tell who that's coming from, but if you're not, um, speaking, if you can mute yourself.
Okay, so that was the third problem he identified, that, um, DHS uh, when asked, you know, had no answers as to what they could do. There were two things. They would just say, well, talk to the landlord. And then secondly, they would say, call the police.
What's not happening?
And then the fourth and the last problem that he identified, which Karen just referred to, is, and this is just an absurdity. The whole part, a big part of the idea behind this program is to deconcentrate poverty, is to move people, you know, who are in the terrible circumstances into a new environment that not only has a lot of amenities, but where they are surrounded by people from whom they can learn new life habits that will help them. But instead, there are like 10 or 12 buildings along Connecticut. Um, I think there was one on Mass Ave and.
Yes, and in the Palisades.
You know, in various neighborhoods in Ward Three, but especially along, uh, Connecticut Avenue, where the number of voucher holders are from 30 to 50%. And, and Karen and I just heard her say it's, it's even higher in her building. And as the consulman, it, Councilman Frumman said, i- i- it's like you're just, you've just moved public housing to a new part of the city.
Okay.
So those were his, you know, identification, I thought brilliantly and succinctly stated of the four problems with the program. And my, the, the reason I think this resolution is so inadequate is that it sends this message that, well, if we just had got more social workers and case managers to these buildings, everything would be okay, and that is not so. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. And let me just address that. Um, as I said, this is a series of resolutions that we're doing. Um, obviously, we could put a caveat that, you know, that this is just one of several issues that the ANC is going to be looking at, if that's a concern amongst the commissioners. Um, but I think the main message that this resolution is sending is that the district needs to um, get a better handle on this program and particularly the case management aspect of it.
I think they need, they need to really consider putting into effect some requirements that don't exist.
Yeah.
Just, not just case managers, but, um, you know, who gets a voucher, who gets a voucher?
Okay, so.
And requiring people to take social services.
Okay. Hang on a minute, Karen, because we're running out of time on this.
Are you on there as a?
And I, I want to get it through. So the commissioner, we are going to do in those subsequent resolutions, one of the things that we're working on now is the data side of this. We want, um, data to support our resolutions. We've.
Their side talk again.
We've actually FOIA'd, um, some of the agencies to get that data. So once that information starts coming.
Excuse me, admit people to the waiting room.
Then, and we have more hard facts to support the concentration. So when we talk about the concentration, most people don't understand what's going on on Connecticut Avenue. And it's not just that it's, you got to ask yourself, how did that, on, that starts at DC Housing Authority? Um, where we have an over-concentration of vouchers on the avenue. We ha- also have an impact with that impacting, um, you know, uh, oh, my gosh.
I am, it says I'm talking, I'm not talking.
Yeah, where it's impacting, um, can't think of the name of it, it just escaped me, but, um, people that are paying rent at a, uh, it's not affordable housing, but. Karen, what's the word? Yes, thank you so much, where it's, uh, actually jeopardizing rent-controlled units. But, um, there's a whole reasoning, reasoning behind that, and it goes back to the HUD audit that was done against the Housing Authority a couple of years ago. Um, so we're seeing like a huge concentration of those vouchers. Not all of them are permanent supportive housing. We don't know what type of vouchers are on Connecticut Avenue. But these are the things that Councilmember Frumman's office and that we are all working to get the facts to support when we submit a resolution, where we're going to talk about concentration, we're going to need hard fact numbers. So that's why we started with this. We started with the four units. We started with the call, because we know that we have evidence here that these children, possibly their situations have been impacted differently.
Please stop the background chat. We cannot hear Lisa Gore. Whoever's talking, stop.
Bruce, can you see who that is?
I've, I've tried many times, like you, I can't.
I, I can't get it there. Um, so that's where we are with that, but, um, let me go to commissioners. Um, Commissioner Grunwald.
I can't.
Then Finacy, then Sherman.
How many voucher residents are there in Ward Three? Who knows this information and, and where are they located? Does anyone?
Carol, just give me one minute. Let me see if I could find, because that's really disruptive. Um.
Yeah, I looked through all the attendees and I couldn't find any on microphones, so.
I agree. Okay, so Karen.
Yeah, so my question is, uh, how many voucher residents are there in Ward Three? And do we know where they live? And if we don't know, why not? Who was in charge of, of, of counting or enumerating voucher residents and locating them? How, how would I find out?
That is very difficult. We have been trying to find that information out, as well as Councilmember Frumman's office. Um, we have had community members that are in the process of FOIAing that information, um, because the agencies will not readily tell you, um, that's protected information. Um, and it's protected for a reason, um, because they are in government.
There's no reason for it to be protected, because we're not asking for names.
And please stop inter-
I'm sorry, I see it's a good thing.
I'll never get through this. Thank you. Um, but, so we are trying to find that information out, Commissioner Grunwald. Um, DHS does have a website that you can go on to that has a data board that will show you. And I don't know if that data is broken out by voucher type. So remember, you have federal vouchers, several different types of federal vouchers, and several different types of DC vouchers. And that's where we have a major problem of trying to figure out, because each of those programs have different rules, as you heard some of the people talk about, in terms of like, so a federal voucher from HUD, that's subsidized by HUD, does not require case management services. So that's what makes it very tricky, and that's why we're proceeding very carefully before we put a resolution out on that aspect until we have that data. But if you go on that DHS website, and I'll send that to you guys, uh, you can do it by ward, and it actually shows you the building location. So you'll be able to see like a, a pin of those locations. It doesn't give you a lot of data, but it does kind of show you where they're located.
Does anybody have a ballpark?
Oh, I'm sorry. So with the number, the last time I just checked, um, oh, I don't want to say the wrong number. I would say there was maybe 600 or so. And I, I cannot remember if that was Ward Three wide. Um, I think that was Ward Three.
And, and this is all listed, this is all listed on the DHS website?
Yes, that, well, it's, it's, uh, yes, it's part of their website. It's a, um, a platform that shows the, uh, voucher, Carol.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Finacy?
Yeah, so, um, I was just thinking, you know, the, the housing first, you don't want I guess the idea is that you don't want to ha- have a hurdle that they have to pass before getting housed. But at the same time, um, I do think it's not rea- it's not really in anybody's best interest to have people with mental illnesses who are not compliant with treatment and not receiving treatment. And I say this as a sibling of somebody with serious mental illness who is compliant, but still cannot live independently, right? And, um, is, would it be possible to put something in our resolution that they get housing concurrent with these services? And that the continuation of the vouchers be And that the continuation of the vouchers be contingent on their accepting and utilizing services. So they don't necessarily have to have gotten to a certain place before getting the housing, but they have to be willing to receive the services and go into the meetings. Um, because I also think, and I'll be very cynical about this, but I think that there's, there's so much money in this program that goes to the landlords, that if the landlords knew that the money would be jeopardized if the people weren't going to social workers and weren't doing that, they might actually encourage more compliance if their funding were contingent on it.
Yeah, so I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Sherman?
Yeah, is there any um, amendment to your resolution that Karen Caston, Elizabeth Pike would like to propose? Because they've made a number of comments having rigid resolution and pointing out issues that they feel that the resolution needs to address. So I would just turn to them to see if there is something they would like to concretely propose by way of, of an amendment.
I apologize, Bruce. Um, because of some family issues, I, I didn't have the chance to uh, uh, do that over the weekend. All I had the chance to do today was to throw together those rough notes I sent to you all.
Right. I don't know, Karen Caston, is there anything that, that you would like specifically to address? Um, I'm hearing your concerns. You're on mute.
Yeah, I'm trying to unmute. I wasn't able to do that. Okay. Um, I just think that it sounds like you're putting forward one resolution initially to be followed by others, if, if I understood correctly. And again, I just think that the first resolution needs to be reworded in such a way that it shows you know that voucher recipients are not required to accept social services and that that is not, it's not helpful to ask the um, council to enforce the regulations when that is the regulation. They are not required to accept um, social services. It would be better, in my view, to ask that um, DC reconsider how it handles um, the social services part uh, of the voucher equation. And I will also just note this, that in the um, housing, the federal housing choice model envisioned that twenty percent of residents in any given building, not more, be people who receive voucher assistance. And I think that the council should be asked to follow that aspect uh, of, of the um, federal housing model. Hey, how come they're ignoring it? Well, because, you know, they want to be able to boast that, you know, we have the best affordable housing program in the country. Um, which we don't. So, um, but I mean, I think it would, it would help not to mistake in the initial resolution um, what you think the requirement is, because it isn't. That's what the council has to do, is to somehow um, modify the way the program is administered here because of the atrocious consequences to the public. People who have vouchers, people who don't have vouchers, who are living in these buildings are, and the neighborhoods around them are just being horribly impacted by what's happening.
Okay, and I think that fits into actually what Commissioner Finacy talked about regarding the concurrent housing um, and contingent upon using those services. So we can work all that language into Commissioner Finacy's suggestion. And Karen, just to piggyback on the uh, when you talked about the uh, percentage, the twenty percent um, cap in a building, you're absolutely correct. There is federal um, standards based on that. And that is one of the resolutions that we are going to do. But again, we want that over capped. If they're over capped, how much are they over capped by? So that's going to give us
There's no limit.
Resolution.
There is no.
I know, but if we got, if we have forty percent, then I want to say forty versus fifteen. Um, I think that's really important for us to differ.
Well, we have sixty. What, what can I say? Or sixty-five? I mean.
Okay, let me go to Commissioner Nagy, then Simmons.
Thank you. Um, I, I think that this whole conversation um, brings up the, as people have alluded to, the much larger problem. There are really serious problems with how DC approaches um, the housing issue. And, and this just highlights it, I mean, the fact that houses, the apartments are so um, overfilled with housing vouchers because there's a financial incentive for landlords to either ignore caps, or you know, in the case of DC, there is no cap, um, is a problem. Is it possible to include language in this resolution saying that we urge the city to um, look at what changes can be made to how it approaches the housing voucher situation? Um, knowing we're gonna, knowing that, knowing that we're going to do another resolution, or maybe two more resolutions. Can we set the tone here to say that we see that there's a problem with how, how the system is set up?
Yeah, I think we can make a general statement on that. Um, we can certainly make a general statement on, you know, having a bullet point that we see fault in the system in terms of how it's operating. Um, and then going back to Commissioner Finacy's and Karen's approach. Approach, um, we can add that. But I, I want to caution the commission that there's, this is a very, you know, delving into those are very complicated and want to be very lengthy. And we still have a lot of work to do to get there to those other points in terms of the issues that Councilmember Fruman has also pointed out. Um, those are things that we've been working on and we're still working on. We're, we just got some data in last week. So we have, we have a way to go on that. But we can certainly set the tone for the additional resolutions to come.
Can, to be clear, to be clear, is, would this tone include some kind of statement that there, that the whole housing voucher um, system needs to be looked at?
Uh, yeah, it could. I mean, it does.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Now, I come from a background uh, where this, I investigated this system and people in it and Housing Authority executive.
Yeah, I know. Yeah.
And tenants, I mean, it's a disruptive system. And the thing that we have to, and we can, you know, make that statement, we, we have to be able to talk about the problems. And I really think we as a community have a problem with this. Um, we, we're so polarized on sides, pro this, pro that, that, you know, the folks that have worked in the middle, like myself, Corrie as a auditor, that are the neutral people coming in and saying, this is problematic. It doesn't matter what side you're on. The problem, or the fact of the matter is that we've always had problems with DC voucher systems. And they've never been solved, because I don't think people have the will to solve them. And when people raise issues, then people start pointing fingers. Um, but there are some very, very serious, serious, it, I mean, it runs the all. And I don't want to belabor this, because I know Laura's counting time. But we have somebody in a voucher assistant unit. We had a family that was homeless, that had a baby, that was basically what we call in our system, an unauthorized tenant. They weren't even legally authorized to be there. They were authorized. Why did nobody know of that? And they were living with another tenant that was a voucher holder, that was in just as dire situation as they were in. So they were not the leaseholders. They improperly were residing in that unit. And nobody knew about that, that is grounds for eviction in and of itself. And if somebody would have been checking on the leaseholder, they would have known that you have an unauthorized authorized family in your unit that just had a newborn baby. And the baby didn't make it. I mean, it's just, you know, the whole system is just, it is horrendous. But yes, Liz, I will take that as a friendly amendment. We can um, work on language for that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to let you know, I'm sorry, long ago I lost my camera and they didn't want to leave the conversation. It was telling me to go out and come back, but I wanted to be sure to hear what, what we were saying, so.
Okay. And Carol, your hand is still up. Did you have a question?
Yes, I do. Just really quickly, I just wanted to say that another major problem uh, surrounding this is the difficulty or inability to evict uh, bad tenants in DC. Um, major, major problem. Thank you.
And we are, we are definitely going to address that. And you're a hundred percent right. I mean, the eviction process has got to come into play. It has to. Um, you know, and that's something I've worked on all across the country, all across the country. And I will always say, um, and people could say what they want, I will always say this is one of the worst jurisdictions for that. I mean, there are all kinds of things that happen in housing that are eligible for eviction, and it does not happen in DC. And I just have never seen that. And I've worked housing in damn near every jurisdiction in this United States. So it is something we have got to get a hand.
It would help if we could envision what happens after someone is evicted. Are they just gonna, gonna sleep on the street? I mean.
That's, that's a problem. That is a huge part of the problem. And I get that. And I saw that on a federal level too. I mean, if you're going into, I've seen, you know, HUD dismantle housing authorities. So it's like, there, there's a very serious conversation that has to happen about, yes, what happens to that person or those people when that occurs? But like in this city, we can't even get there. Um, let me go back to Carol.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that this is, the eviction problem is not just to do with um, voucher residents. I think people in, residents in general are very reluctant to rent their English basements or at the ADU in the backyard, the, you know, um, because they know that they will have great difficulty or, you know, in, in evicting a, a bad tenant. So I think it would be quite helpful if the eviction laws were spiffed up. Um, that way, people, you know, could, if, if people can, you know, actually evict bad tenants from their, from their basement apartment or the accessory dwelling unit in their backyard, people would be more likely to rent those out. And that would really help with the housing situation, I think.
Commissioner Simmons?
Hi, Lisa. Um, Commissioner Gore, I just want to thank you and um, Commissioner Goslin on this issue. I just wanted to see if we can move forward on a vote um, with the friendly amendments that we've received. Because I think we all are in support of this.
All right. Um, so with that, I'll call for the vote. Um, and the motion is on the resolution and the friendly, including the friendly amendments offered by Commissioner Nagy and Commissioner Finacy, which incorporates um, community member Karen Caston's comments. Is there a second?
Can you read it, Wes? Too long.
Too long. Too long.
Can you send it to us?
Yes, I will send it. Um, it's been set properly seconded. Commissioner, can we do a voice vote? Um, since we have Commissioner Nagy doesn't have her camera. Um, I'm gonna actually do a roll call.
I, I can, I can raise my, my hand.
Oh, great. Um, all those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, thank you. Six zero. Thanks, commissioners. Um, and.
Can I ask, can I ask, sorry, um.
Just, um, Commissioner.
Sorry, for the minute, sorry, we said, just one sec. You who actually made the motion? You did?
Yes.
Okay, and who seconded it?
Simmons.
It was Laura.
Laura, okay.
Thanks.
Thanks, commissioners. And I will circulate, obviously, the draft and we'll keep, keep, keep that draft going until everybody's satisfied with the amendments. Okay, Commissioner Sherman, turn it over to you.
Um, right, I'm mindful, it's um.
Can we, um, question, can we minimize the rest of the items is nine oh three? Please.
Can we do what? Sorry?
Um, just condense the, the timing on our, our items left on the agenda.
Okay, we just went thirty-five minutes over on the previous segment. Um, the two issues that are on the agenda for discussion, we can continue in the next meeting. I want to flag them now, because I think we, and I'm urging our commission and our community to be very focused, very present, uh, have a great presence of mind on the plight of federal workers who have been dismissed in our ANC. The district projects, as I think many of you have read, that over the next several years, DC is going to lose an estimated forty thousand federal workers. It's going to have a catastrophic effect on the district in terms of revenues. So lost sales tax, lost income tax is going to force, over the next three to four fiscal years, one billion dollars of shortfall in the budget. The matter that uh, Lejoria Johnson Law referred to, to go to Congress and lobby the House of Representatives to concur with the Senate bill that would allow DC to continue its funding at FY twenty-five levels, as opposed reverting to FY twenty-four levels that were in the continuing resolution, is indicative of the situation the district finds itself in now, which is a severe budget problem. Regardless what happens in Congress right now, and hopefully, of course, the House concurs with the Senate, the district of its own will have to take very significant budget cuts. So I have issued a call publicly, I've put it on the listserv, I've put it out to my constituents, I want to put it out here, I'll create it, for offers of help, suggestions of how we can come to the aid of our neighbors, federal workers who've lost their jobs. Uh, one suggestion that I've received uh, already, I've received a number, but one I want to highlight is that we and the ANC host an event at the community center or at a public place. It could be a restaurant, it could be any number of places, I'll give further thought to this, uh, that honors our federal workers and calls them together to thank them for their service, uh, and show our sympathy and our support for them. Uh, that's just for starters. In terms of what we might be able to do, I encourage commissioners to think about and reach out to your constituents and ask how we collectively as a community and how the ANC can come to the aid of our fellow neighbors who've lost their jobs. Then secondly, and I'm condensing Commissioner Simmons, secondly, with respect to the budget crisis, uh, I noticed that a possible agenda item for the next meeting is a vote on an ANC budget request letter. If in fact, we're going to take a look at the budget, I urge us to take a look at it in the context of what is rapidly developing now with respect to very serious cuts being proposed to education, to public safety, uh, to human services, uh, and so forth. And to have a position uh, by the ANC that reflects our community's concerns, the issues in our community. At the last meeting, as we all know, we passed a resolution unanimously, calling on the district to preserve the pre-K enhancement and expansion program, PEKE. But that's just a very, very small part, around twenty million dollars a year, uh, and a very small articulation of priority by our ANC. So I'm flagging here, and we can stop at this point, I'm open to any comments in the remaining time we've got, uh, that we uh, take a look now at what we can be doing and just be in the moment, because so much is swirling around us. And we have so many other issues, obviously the civic corps and others, uh, that I want to urge us to try to be as mindful as possible of these very dynamic events that are, that are deeply affecting our community. So that's what I wanted to call attention to, commissioners. So any comments, or we can pick this up later in terms of? So any comments, or we can pick this up later in terms of
I just put a comment in the chat about health insurance for federal workers who may have lost it.
Right, thank you. And I have, I have noted for my constituents, a number of the resources that DC is making available. DC, Maryland, and Virginia are actively recruiting dismissed federal workers to take jobs at the state and of course, the DC level. So I will be looking at resources that we can be sharing with the community, and I encourage all of us to do that, just as Commissioner Finacy just did now with respect to the health insurance. But there is a lot of assistance being offered by DC that we can share with our constituents.
And I think, you know, individually commissioners have been doing a really great job of sharing those resources with everyone. But yes, we should all take a pause and maybe see what we could do on a broader level amongst the ANC. Anything else on this topic, Bruce?
I just, I do want to come back and and ask us to consider hosting an event for federal workers who've been dismissed to show our solidarity with them, and I'll have some further ideas on what that might look like.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that'd be great. I'd like to see unions involved in that, if we can, we might get some union participation. And maybe jurisdictional, you know, cross jurisdictional. Good idea. Okay. Bruce, you also had DC's budget crisis, or did you roll everything into one with that? Or did you want to?
I I just did.
Okay.
I just want to underscore, this budget thing is happening dynamically.
Oh, for sure.
Right before our very eyes. And what will happen very soon is that separate apart from what the House might or might not do, if the House does not concur with the Senate, then we have immediate budget cuts. In any event, DC is going to be taking budget cuts that will affect Lafayette, it will affect all of the issues we're talking about with respect to human services up and down Connecticut Avenue. It might, it might affect the civic corps funding, it could affect a number of things, we have no idea. So I'll be looking at that and and urging us as a commission to be issuing some recommendations, guidance to our elected representatives on what our neighborhood articulates in terms of priorities.
Okay.
And I think, Camila's had her hand up. Come here.
Come here. Thank you. I I really appreciate you considering all that's happened to the federal workers in our community. I know it's impacting so many of us and the, and our, and our community members. I was wondering if there's a place that we could have some of these resources kind of pulled together, so that way people can look at them. And of course, again, it's like, like Commissioner Sherman has mentioned, it's a dynamic situation. But just the place that, even if it's not necessarily something that is happening to me, maybe I can refer someone if I overhear, or I know of someone that this is a resource that they can go to.
It's, it's a great idea. I think we could put something up at our website and and use that as a repository, as you're suggesting, suggesting, Camila. I think it's a great idea.
Awesome, thank you.
And that was something similar we did with the COVID impact. We had a dedicated page on our website that had COVID resources. So we definitely, you know, I think we could do that. That would be great. Kendall?
Hi, everybody. I wanted to share that there is a dedicated spot for support for federal workers. It's fedsupport.dc.gov. It has a bunch of different resources that people can rely on. You know, in this very difficult time, I'm going to put that in the chat, but it's just fedsupport.dc.gov.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Kendall.
Okay. Is there any other community announcements?
I can keep talking.
Go on.
Hi, everybody. I'm Kendall Gibson. I'm your Ward Three manager in the mayor's office, and I'll be brief. First, I want to share that I will be hosting office hours to meet Ward Three residents and scale up on issues that require my attention. This month, I'll be having office hours tomorrow at the Tenley Town Friendship Library from two to five PM. So that's tomorrow, the twenty-fifth, two to five PM, Conference Room One at the Tenley Town Friendship Library. And y'all are stealing my gig. I wanted to share about the DC Health Link event that's happening that is happening on March twenty-sixth. It's happening at the Cleveland Park Library. And I'll drop that link in the chat. It's just dchhealthlink.com/lostcoverage. DC boasts a very low uninsured rate. We're very proud of that, and we want to maintain that as we head through this period of uncertainty. DC Health Link is a great resource for people who are underinsured to gain health insurance, and this event is specifically for people who have been laid off. Next, I want to talk about the summer. Now that summer's on the horizon, I'm sure that parents are wondering about what out-of-school options are available for little ones. And this Saturday, March twenty-ninth, you can join the Office of the Deputy Mayor for Education for their Summer in the City event. At this event, parents can explore all of the out-of-school programming available to district youth, and that's a pretty large range. It's between ages five to twenty-one. So we have all different types of things, jobs, internships, as well as different engaging programs for for younger people. This event will take place at Martin Luther King Junior Library from eleven AM to two PM. I will drop that in the chat as well. But I just wanted to introduce myself. Mokers, Mayor's Office, Community Relations and Services were available to the community to liaison between you and different DC agencies. So I'm going to put my email down, just so you can reach out to me in case anything pops up and you need a little bit of help. But it's a pleasure to serve, and thank you all for having me.
Mr. Nagy?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to Kendall and to say that I've, I've worked quite a bit with her, even though it's only been a couple of months, three months. And with Owen in her office, so thank you very much. Lots of things have gotten done, and I really appreciate all the help that you've given me since we've been working together.
That's so kind, and Phil's going to call you tomorrow, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I have been wondering. Thank you. Bye.
Any other community or commissioner announcements?
Just that on, I'll be announcing this publicly to my constituents tomorrow. I'm going to be hosting a community Zoom call for SMD zero two. That's a look ahead to Saturday's event. It'll be from seven to eight Zoom, again, for SMD zero two residents.
What's the date?
Wednesday from seven, this Wednesday, from seven to eight PM.
Any other announcements? All right, so was that treasurer's report?
Hi, really quickly, our February treasurer report, our beginning balance was a little bit over sixty-four thousand dollars with our end imbalance midpoint for sixty-three thousand. I sent you guys the specific details earlier this month, and we had two checks which related to the setup for our in-person meetings. That's all.
Can I just mention, sorry, I can raise my hand, but I just wanted to say that I sent the meeting minutes, the final meeting minutes to you, Lisa, so that they go into Corinthians KFR. I was only able to do the one, I'm having issues with the second one. But I'll, I'll get that done tomorrow. So Corinthians, you'll be able to get that for your quarterly report.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. So there's a couple items for the April seventh meeting. Obviously, we want to keep on the subject of the civic corps, and I would suggest a separate breakout or separate section for engagement, because by April seventh, we should have something from commissioners Sherman and Simmons on the survey. I'm asking the committee chairs to do a report and report out on what they plan to do. So basically, a presentation before the ANC to include if there's any new appointments for the committees, anything that they need for us to know. We still have on here presentation by Mokers, it would be great. I think Commissioner Grunwald had suggested that a while back. Chevy Chase Main Street wants to present. We talked about possible vote on the budget request letter. I can't remember which commissioner, one of the commissioners, it might have been you, Bruce, mentioned threat to home rule, a discussion on that. And Goslin and Simmons, you guys had talked about Connecticut Avenue engagement with building owners. I think that's a good topic. We should still probably try to get on the agenda, and specifically in light of the resolution that we discussed tonight, that would be a really good thing. Is there anything vote on quarterly report, Corinthians, commissioners?
No, the next quarterly
Okay. Commissioner Nagy, did you have something?
I wanted to ask about the committees. Have we resolved our issues about the committees going forward, because now we're talking about having them make presentations?
I don't, I don't know what other issues are we have about them going forward.
Okay, well, why don't we talk about it offline?
We had a huge two-hour special.
Offline, Lisa.
That would be great. I'm at loss for that one. Anything else for April seven, folks? Okay, we'll obviously circulate it around. All right, thank you so much. The time is eight nineteen. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Yes, yes, thank you so much. Thanks for hanging in there with us, and great meeting, commissioners. This was really good. Thank you. Good night. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you. Thank you for making time.
You're welcome.
For me to be heard.
Absolutely. You're welcome.
Take care.
You too. Bye-bye.